I will log in into the computers. So we'll go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order and it is a 3:03. At this time, we're going to skip the pledge of the legion and we're going to go ahead and go directly to roll call. So. We don't have a flag. So in attendance, we have Bob Gepper, Supervisor Doug Banks, Supervisor Walsh, Supervisor Carol, and Supervisor Ed Tinkle. And also in attendance, we have Ross Wire, Laura, and Chelsea. And I believe, and then we also have Tony Pierce as our attorney. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
Madam Chairman, I move not to proceed with Agenda Item Number Fifteen on. Madam Chairman, I move not to proceed with Agenda Item Number Fifteen until it is properly noticed, with written notice to all property owners in the district, as well as newspaper publication.
Okay, we have a motion, okay, we have a motion in a second for discussion. Tony, can you just, before I go to vote, I want a clarification on the notices that went out?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I think what Ms. Pankow was reciting is referencing a portion of the correspondence from Jennifer Kalinsky dated March 17th, 2025, where there is an assertion as to the notice process at the present time. My opinion, this is similar to the process, exactly the process we used back in 2020, where we first, the board first approved upon advertisement of a public hearing, approved an assessment methodology for the purpose of preparing the budget for the fiscal year. Back then, it was 2020, 2021. And this year, it's being approved for the purpose of preparing the budget and assessments for fiscal year 24, excuse me, 25, 26. Similar to, and exactly similar to what was done in 2020. Subsequently, when the board sets its budget hearing, the board will adopt a resolution comparable to the resolution that was adopted in Resolution 2020-12 in 2020 that sets the public hearing, provides for notice in the newspaper, provides for the mailing, because at this time, the board is not levying any assessments. The board is approving an assessment methodology to go forward with consideration of discussing the budget later on, whether it's June or July and setting the hearing for July or August. And at that time, there will be mailed notices to all property owners as to the proposed assessments to be levied against their property, if any, and the utilization of the methodology that will be utilized if the board approves this one today. That complies with Chapter 170 and 197.3632 subsection four, contrary to the position of Ms. Kalinsky. In my opinion, it's been properly noticed for today.
All right, thank you, Tony.
I'm sure that we can spend a lot of time with lawyers and dollars and cents and everything, go back and forth. Is this one right? Is that one right? Is this section applied? Does that section apply? Why don't we just take a breath, notice it to everybody, and that way it'll be covered. It may be a delay of a month or two, maybe even a month and a half. But at that time, we'll know we have every base covered and we'll just go forward with the public hearing.
Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you. The statute that cited relates to the adoption of a non-adverbal assessment rule. The board is not doing that today. The statute that's referenced, 197.3632 subsection four, addresses the levying of assessments. That is not happening today. There are no dollar numbers that would be levied against any properties today. That will come at the time of the budget adoption. And prior to that, there will be the notice in the newspaper, there will be the mailed notice to affected property owners consistent with Florida law. It's, and so in my opinion, it's not necessary to have mailed notices for the consideration of adoption of a revised assessment methodology.
And so, Tony, just to be clear, today's purpose is to adopt the assessment, to approve the assessment methodology. Not any specific numbers, just the methodology that will be used at a future time to determine those numbers.
The board is not levying any assessments today. The board is not approving or adopting any non-adverbal assessments today.
Okay, does any?
It's to approve the process.
To approve the methodology to be used when the board considers preparation of and adoption of the process. And again, the public will have an opportunity, and all residents will have an opportunity, to provide their comments and objections to the approved assessment methodology at the hearing, or the budget hearing. They can challenge and have objections to the budget, to their assessments, to the allocation of benefits. All that can happen at the meeting, and that's the appropriate time. We can object today, but again, there's no need to not have this hearing today, in my humble opinion.
And, and the way I look at it is, we've gone through months and of preparation, multiple workshops, and the board has been transparent with all documentation in relation to the methodology for all the pertinent areas throughout that full-time period.
Okay, is any other, go ahead.
My own. Doug, I hear what you're saying. I do not share that opinion. Yeah, I hear what you're sharing. I do not share that opinion, because there have been a number of residents to the workshops that wanted to have input, and we've denied that to them. We allow them to put a question forward, and then we get a brief answer to that question. There's been no direct dialogue. There's been no point-counterpoint. So I totally support what Carol's saying. Let's take this opportunity. I don't know what the rush is, because this is going to be here for a long time. We don't need to do it today. We don't even need to do it two months from now. So I have an opinion. I hear your opinion.
I just want to have one point of clarity, one question, Carol. Regarding of us not allowing residents to speak, that is completely not true. And our workshops are workshops of the board, and that's when the board is having a workshop within the five of us and staff. The time and the place for residents to speak are at the meetings. And we have never, and I'll make sure it's very clear, have never not allowed a resident to speak at such meetings. We have accommodated and allowed additional time once requested. So I just want to make that point very clear. Go ahead, Carol. Carol, let Carol speak, and then you can go back.
Okay, I am not a lawyer, so I don't know if this lawyer is right, or that section is right, or this applies, or that applies. But why not just take a step back, cover all the bases at one time, so that when the time comes for the public hearing, everything is absolutely correct. There are no objections that could be made to it. And rather than fight about it, let's just agree to move forward and to take the time, notice everybody, even the, because if we notice everybody, that includes all the commercial people, too. Your golf courses. I doubt that anybody reads a newspaper these days. In fact, I bet if I took a poll of this audience, there might be one or two people out here that actually read a newspaper these days. If it hadn't been for social media and all the other types of communication, these people would not even know about it today. So let's just take a breath. Let's step back. Let's do everything. And then we know, the public hearing will be absolutely fine. There's no rush.
Tony, Tony, is everything done, been done proper?
In my opinion, the, this process is proper. As I mentioned, it seems to get lost in the conversation, is that this is to approve it. So we, the board has a revised assessment methodology if it wishes to approve this in the preparation of the budget. The board will then have numbers in the proposed budget, and will then have the numbers and the costs allocated among the properties based upon the assessment methodology. That then goes out to the property owners, if it's, if it's required by the statute. And last time this was done, this is what, what happened. The mailed notice to the property owners, as well as the add in the newspaper. And at that time, the parties can come in and object to the assessment methodology, and object to the assessment, object to the allocations, object to anything that is noticed. Is that correct, Russ? And you've utilized this before also?
Okay, so I'm going to just summarize your answer to add, and the answer is yes. Given the procedures we follow, we have followed what the requirements are for this meeting and this motion to be on the floor for approval or not. Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, what I was commenting about, just one again, that thing's a waste of time. What I was commenting about, Flavia, is not that we didn't go through the pro forma in our workshops. I understand the workshops were for us. But the public was invited to it. And my problem with what we did and how we did it, is that we didn't get a dialogue of give and take. You can't just submit a question, "Thank you for your consideration," and no further discussion of it. We, I was hoping, and what I was hoping we could do, was to come to the point in time where we either agree to disagree, but at least all the parts were heard. We haven't done this in a coherent manner, in my personal opinion. It may be legal, but it wasn't, you know. Now, the other part of all this process for me is, I don't believe we're really talking about a lot of money. So why are we doing it in such a rush to judgment and in an antagonistic environment, rather than trying to work through the things before we, you know, go forward? And I think that's what Carol said. Let's get to the point where everybody has their input. There's no damage to us to do this. You know, I don't know what the problem is that we must do it today. I think we can do it in a more thoughtful manner. And if we truly are one district, then we ought to be sensitive to all of the district residents and their ability to go forward. And there are representatives here that are strongly, you know, in disagreement to what we're trying to do. I just want to hear what they have to say, and really make sure that Russ has a chance to hear them, and that there is a dialogue back and forth.
Okay, so this will be the final comment that I will have, and then we'll go ahead and call for a vote. So we all said in every single meeting, we all heard what every resident had to say. There were questions that we could not answer, and answers were provided by staff or Russ at all the meetings in follow-up questions. In addition to emails that staff have received, and we have follow-up with all of those. At this point, I'm comfortable calling the vote for, you have one more thing?
Chelsea, do we have any outstanding questions from any residents currently that, that we have not answered?
No, no, all of, any comments that were provided, were provided directly to the consultant.
Okay, so as it sits today, we do not have any pending questions from any residents regarding the assessment methodology?
Correct.
Okay.
Russ, you don't have any questions? I sent you an email this week.
No, I have, there was one that came in this week, which I will comment on in my presentation.
Okay, so we have one question for a board member that will be addressed at the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and call it for a vote. So we have a motion made by Carol, a second made by Bob. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, against? Say no.
No.
No. Motion fails.
Madam Chairman, just another real quick comment. For clarification, because I'm not sure if people understand. The board is not adopting a non-adverbal special assessment rule today. They are not adopting an assessment rule. I think that's black and white, clear. So if there's any thought that that's what's happening, that is not happening today. That will happen in July or August with the adoption of the budget. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so we'll go, yes.
Thank you. I move to add methodology to the agenda under 11A.
What do you mean by that?
The topic of methodology, the methodology that we're going to have the public hearing on later on today. I would like to add that as Agenda Item 11A.
What would be the contents? What would be covered? Don't we, don't we need prepared, and what do you, I'm not sure what your purpose is?
Well, I think that would give Russ the opportunity to answer the question that was emailed to him by Bob, first of all. Second of all, if any other commissioners, like myself, still have a couple of questions about a few things, I can ask them at that time. I don't, I, the public hearing is to allow people to express their opinion, not listen to questions that I might have.
Okay, so, so we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? So we have a motion, a second. Any more discussions? No? I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
No.
Four to one, motion passes. So go ahead and add methodology under 11A, district agenda items.
Can we just agree that, let's just keep some rails around that conversation? So we address the question that, the question that was specifically asked to Russ. And we don't derail the regular board meeting, and we can make sure that, let's just be respectful of, of content and scope.
All right, so I will go ahead and call for approval of the final agenda with the, as amended, with the 11A being methodologies. So I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Four to one. We'll go ahead and move to public comment.
All right, I have a few people signed up. Whoever's coming to public comment, if you would step up to the podium up here. You don't need, it's a omnidirectional, so you can just stand and speak. You don't have to eat the mic. Are we doing three minutes, Flavia, for this part of the public comment?
I believe we had one, I had one request for a resident to speak on behalf of a group of residents, and he would like additional time.
Okay, I have one resident that requested to speak both now and during the public hearing. The other three are just now.
No, they can speak on both. They can speak now and they can speak at a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I only have one now. I'm sorry. I got them backwards. I misunderstood. So it's three minutes now, and then?
Three minutes? Is, who is the resident?
Phil Rovner is now.
Okay, so, yes.
I'll have a total of four for the public hearing then.
Okay. Okay, so we only have one comment for this meet. Yeah, so we, I'm just going to repeat it. We only have one resident that would like to speak at this meeting now, and we'll go ahead and call that resident for the three minutes.
Okay, Phil Rovner, you are our sole public comment for this portion. You all have three minutes.
Is this the gentleman that is speaking on behalf of a group?
He's, he's the one who requested to speak both now and at the hearing. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Philip Rovner. I'm a resident of Pelican Preserve, live on Carina Circle. I've been working on this issue on my own behalf and on that of other members of the community since last year, when Rule Six was denied. The methodology process is inarticulate in the way it's designed. The Florida statute says that it needs to be fair and equitable. It puzzles me, and has puzzled me since the beginning of this discussion, that the methodologist that was retained by the CDD is the same methodologist that did the report in '23. '23, very clearly in the bond resolution, which underpins the whole rationale for doing the methodology, said that the distinct areas, there were two distinct areas within the CDD, one being Gateway, and the other being Pelican Preserve. Furthermore, the CDD's engineers stipulated the same thing in the same report, and that has been the position of the CDD for years and years and years prior to today. This is not a fair and equitable relationship in terms of the change that's been made. And I would invite the methodologists to explain the rationale for changing the methodology such that Pelican Preserve is ensnared in trying to build the park in Gateway for which it has no use and no access. I further believe that the CDD was disingenuous with regard to how it treated the vote of citizens with regard to the park. A survey was launched last year, asking the residents as to whether or not they wanted to have this park. The vote from that survey was negative. Less than 50% of the people in Gateway wanted to have this park, and none of the surveys were sent to anybody at Pelican Preserve, which undoubtedly would have voted in the negative with respect to this. It's my opinion that the movement that's being made right now is simply a means to get Pelican to pay for the use of assets to which it has no immediate access and no need, given the existence of its own facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, that, that's the only public comment I have for this portion.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move to local achievements. Do we have anything?
I do. I have a couple. I just want to say, I want to give kudos. We had a resident come in today directly because of the newsletter that just went out. And he complimented the gentleman, Randy, who put it together, and said that it was a very well-written newsletter, and that he came in to sign up for the dog park because of said newsletter. So kudos to Randy and his creativity. Additionally, we've had, with the meter box replacement project, we've had the SRF loan. Laura got high kudos for a completeness package, so I just want to commend her for her efforts with that submittal. Good job, Laura. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead.
I'm sorry, is this ever the, is this the first-ever newsletter? Oh, really? It's been in the past? I haven't gotten it in the past. In the future, couldn't we put public hearings on there, too? It was in there? I read it. I didn't see it. Okay, my fault.
All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move to advisory committees and items to report.
These are your subcommittees that are just reporting up, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Okay, does anybody have any question regarding the park and recreation report, or the park and recreation advisory committee monthly report? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We'll go ahead and we'll move to approval of the minutes.
Move to approve Agenda Items Eight, Eight, A, B, C, and D.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And Consent Agenda Items Nine, do you want to go over this, or you want Daniel?
So Nine A is, we were awarded that almost $1 million for design for the lake bank projects. We have 21 ponds. And then Nine B is to have Tetra Tech do said design for those ponds. And it's a 25% match that we are funding, but we're getting 75% free.
Consent Agenda Items Nine A and B.
We have a motion by Carol, second by Ed. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Bob, I didn't hear you. Okay, so we have four to one. District Engineer, Tetra Tech update. Oh, hi, I didn't even see you.
Good afternoon. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Today, I just have the task authorization update. First up is the irrigation pump station generator. The contractor is awaiting the building permit for that project, so we're on hold until he gets that. Irrigation and force main improvements, we are waiting funding options. We're, we're seeking HMGP funding for those, so that's on hold until we secure some funding. The Lower Hawthorne Well is in construction still. Our sub started work on the piping this week, and there's several more weeks left of that project before it's wrapped up. The utility storage building, that is in construction right now. They are working on the foundation. Phase Two, Year Two Lake Bank restoration. Tomorrow, we have our substantial completion walkthroughs for Lake 127 and 130. And hopefully, we'll be able to wrap those up in the next couple of weeks. FY24 lakes. Daniel and I, we walked 128, 125, and 105 this morning. MRI is the contractor. They're substantially complete with one of the four lakes. They're almost done with the second one, and they're about to start on the third one. FY25 lakes. C and B is working on Lake 98 and 99 right now. They're getting pretty close to wrapping up 98. They've got a few more weeks left there. And Met Tower is about to start Lake 109. The Public Works Storage Building, that is on hold right now. We have a pre-application meeting with Lee County scheduled for the first week of April, so we can kind of get some more information from them, since we're going to be doing work on Lee County property at the wastewater treatment plant. There's going to be some permitting nuances that we want to get hammered out before we get the TA final. The Commons Park and Admin Building, we're waiting for the contractor to finalize their submittal for the roofing system, so they can get that submitted to the county for the building permit. The FGWA interconnect is substantially complete. They have a small punch, a small list of punch list items that they need to, to finish. They should be done over the next couple of weeks. Next up is the CCTV sewer and CCTV storm projects. The sewer one is out to bid right now, and the storm project is, is getting pretty close to being sent out to bid. The next one is the engineer's report for assessment methodology, which is why we're all here today. We'll talk about that later. Pelican Lakes 47 and 48, we are having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow lakeside with Extreme Divers. Development updates, Arborwood Phase Three, we're still working with Lennar on punch list items for the stormwater system. Daniel's Parkway Apartments, we did return their submittal number four back to them with comments. Santa Luz, we are working through the last of the punch list items with Lennar. And Garrett FM, the Alter Re Zone, you've seen they've made a lot of progress on that. All the buildings are gone, and they've started regrading the site. So they haven't started any utility work, but we will be out there once they do. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, Stephen, we still don't have the permit for the administrative building?
We do not. Right now, the contractor is working on a roofing system that meets our specifications and has an FL approval number on it that is, is agreeable with the county. So we're on hold right now until the contractor provides that information.
So what's your best guess?
I don't know. Chelsea, I don't know. You might have a better idea than I do.
Resubmitted to the county in the next two weeks. And then, from that point, we've had great communication with the county, and hopefully, an expedited review from the one gentleman who we can't seem to get through, so.
So we're talking May?
I would say shovel in ground as soon as we get the permit, which we're end of March. Worst-case scenario, yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll go ahead. Any other questions? You have one?
Yeah. I hate those things. Stephen, Stephen. Stephen, have you coordinated with Tony relative to all of the issues at Santa Luz? I've got 64 residents down there that are about fed up with Lennar.
Yep, Tony called me earlier this week, and we've come up with a game plan, and I owe him an email. So we'll get that turned around. I'll, I'll give my information to Tony tomorrow, and he'll be able to do his magic.
All right, no more, no more questions for District Engineer?
Thank you.
All right. We will go ahead and, we don't have anything 11? 11A? Go ahead, go ahead, Carol.
Yes. I think we've talked through waterways and ponds. I think we've talked through roadways and landscape. I really don't have any more questions on those. But I guess I want to go back to the sacred cow, which is Parks and Recreation. I know how we came up with the number of .15. I think, what, Bob had a number, Doug had a number, I don't know, maybe Ed had a number. And it was a compromise on this board to the .15 that is now in the, in the methodology. Looking ahead in future years, depending, I, I know you cannot tie the hands of a future board. But looking ahead, is there some baseline, some common denominator, some, something that percentages could be based on going into the future? And I don't- And I don't know that we necessarily have to, I mean, what we did was a compromise, I understand that, and, you know, we're moving forward with it. But what's to say, two years from now, that $2 million worth of Parks and Rec come on into the budget, and somebody says, oh, well, let's just raise that .15 to .3, or .4, or pick a number? Because that's basically what we did. We picked a number. But there was no basis to it. I'm wondering if we could spend the next couple of weeks or whatever, as we're starting the budgeting process, and talk about a way that maybe we could do some baseline where it could be measured rather than a compromise.
I have one comment, and I think I made this comment a few meetings ago. So, fair and equitable, right? So what I was thinking is, yes, we did a compromise, and I understand your question, and it's something that Russ and I talked about. So, are you looking for a one-to-one? Because it was very clear that benefit, Pelican Preserve is having full benefits of the park, paying 85% less. So, while the room is full of red, we do have residents here that also represent Gateway, and I have to answer those questions to them. So, on the Gateway part, geographically speaking, they are paying the whole amount, having full benefits. Everybody else here that is Pelican Preserve are going to have full benefits and are going to pay 85% less. So is your question, is, are you really asking for a baseline, or you wanted to go fair and equitable, that everybody pays the same amount because everybody has access and availability, and the benefit is equal to all? Commercial, Pelican Preserve, C5, Gateway?
All the other sections that we are in the methodology have some baseline to them, whether it's impervious surfaces, whether it's the, the road baseline. It has some logic to it. It has some measurement device to it. All that has been said so far about Parks and Rec is that it's a benefit, period. How do you measure that benefit? How does it come about? And I'm not necessarily saying right now, but I think it would be good for future to have some way of measuring that benefit. Right now, it just says there is a benefit, period. We don't know how much the benefit is, where it's coming from, or anything.
So I will say...
So anyway, I was wondering if the board would consider trying to find some sort of measurement device, some sort of way of measuring that benefit.
Okay, so I'll address the two, to me it's two parts. So the part one, that we had measurements, we had guidelines, and I think Russ can touch into that. So we had a set of numbers that we go by, and roads, it was, those percentages, the discounts, and they were allocated, Russ just had to follow what's already set in place for him to follow. That's why those are reasonable. The Parks and Rec was something that was not, and Russ, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was something that was not within the guidelines that allow us the ability to play with those numbers. Russ?
So, to answer, it's, is it quantifiable? The benefit quantifiable?
Well, for the record, it's Russ Wire with Real Estate Accountometrics, I just want to make sure you get that right. Okay. If you recall, when we did the original workshop on this, the allocation was one for everybody. That's, that's what we originally, that was my original recommendation, and I had a basis for that. I had a couple of places that had Parks and Rec that had, that they used one across the board. I'm working on one right now in Collier County that's one across the board. Everybody pays equally, doesn't matter where they're located. It's kind of like with your, with your parks here. You pay for a county park, do you use it? But you pay for it. So, that's, that's when you went into the negotiation as a board, which you're allowed to do. Mine was just a recommendation, and I had a basis for that. Now, the .15, you came up with that. How we do that, we would probably have to go into some sort of a, have to do some thinking about that, how we can base, back that up, I guess, is the, is the reason.
Well, the one, the one piece of data that we had doesn't necessarily apply to the park, but we do have a pool. There is a swimming pool in Gateway right now. And although every resident of this district can go to it, the fact remains that over the last year, not one person from Pelican ever went there. Now, Pelican does have five pools of their own, but that's beside the point. When we're looking at fair and equitable, if I've already, if I'm getting free tuition and free food, why would I want to go someplace that I have to pay for? So, the same thing may apply with parks. Maybe we're going to have some type of entry system in park, and it'd be very interesting to see if people go. If they go, I'm all in favor of paying. But if they never touch it, then, you know, you're just plucking the fat tail. And unfortunately, that's the way I look at it.
Madam Chair, may I ask Russ a question? So Russ, what you're saying is your original recommendation, based upon your expert opinion, based upon your experience and supported by substantial competent evidence, is that one unit would be appropriate to allocate to every parcel in Pelican and Gateway for Parks and Recreation?
That's correct, within the district.
Yes, in other words, so it wasn't arbitrary or capricious, correct?
That's correct.
And so, there's a basis for it. So what the board decided to do was something less than what is the, an ability to levy or allocate one unit to every parcel for purposes of Parks and Rec, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I just have one, hold on.
So Tony, one question on that.
Hold on, Bob. Like Bob, 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 I'm going to ask you to let me speak in, and I'll open for you. Please.
Like everybody?
Like everybody else. Hold on. I want to clarify your comment regarding Pelican Preserve's not utilizing the pool. They can utilize the pool if they choose so, and if they pay the membership. As of right now, they cannot use the pool unless they pay for that. So there's a reason why Resident A or Resident B chooses not to use the pool. Right now, they are not allowed to use the pool unless they pay the membership, because, because they don't pay for it. And just to Carol's point at the last meeting, she was unaware that anybody could do, do it and, and paying for it. So there's a reason why there is either zero or very low residents utilizing that facility is because they do not pay for it. If they want to do that, they can pay the yearly membership, and they'll be open for them to use at any time.
But the fact remains, not a single person has used it. Okay? And to Tony's point, saying that this is the fair and equitable conclusion, what about the first 25 years when Pelican had Rule Six? And we didn't pay? You're totally ignoring that precedent. Yeah, we've got Russ here now, and he came up with a precedent. But what the hell about the first 25 years? Was that in error? I don't think so.
We have a methodology report. The expert has advised and testified that...
Bob, can you please just allow Tony to speak?
And again...
Allow Tony to speak, to answer your question.
I think from, what I'm saying from legal perspective, there was support for, and again, whether a party uses the property or not is not the test. Whether it benefits the property is the test, correct, Russ?
I'm sorry?
The test is whether or not the facilities or services benefit property. A person doesn't have to actually use them to receive the benefit.
They have access to it, that's correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bob. All right, so any other questions for Russ? Bob, I believe you had a question. You sure you don't want to ask Russ the question? You had emailed him?
I can't understand. What's the question that you emailed Russ? Because we were in that, we're in the...
Now is the time for you to revisit that question?
That's the Ed Hedges, I think it's... It's Ed Hedges' question.
So who would you, okay, so Russ, do you want to go ahead and address the question that Bob had emailed you yesterday?
Yes, I did see the note from Mr. Hedges and where he was saying I was still utilizing the old percentages with regard to how we were allocating the budget. And I want to point out that we did use the old inside the gate, outside the gate figures to calculate the effect of the new methodology, the new methodology would have on the current year's assessments. So I needed to separate that amount out. Let me finish. I needed to separate that amount out, which came out to $110,000, which got split 80%, 20%. 80% of that 110 went over to the Gateway side, the 20% went inside the gate. So that may allowed us to take a look at what the assessments would have been if this methodology was used with this year's budget. So, in the future, what will happen, there will be a proposal that will come in from a landscape company that will show what the budget is going to be from the sidewalk to the west, and that will include tree trimming, all of those things you've talked about. And then there will be whatever that your side is on the east side of that sidewalk. And that will be, that will go into the Pelican Preserve side. So, going in forward, that's how that will be calculated.
And part of that, I'll go back to the question that we brought up in our last workshop. I'm not quite sure why we choose to differentiate between inside and outside. If it's outside, it ought to be the district. If it's inside, it ought to be Pelican. But we're splitting hairs and saying, no, that particular part of it, yeah, it's outside the gate, but that ought to be Pelican. Bull. It's either all in or all out.
It depends, and that's the opinion of the board, and, and I understand that also. It depends, if you're looking at actually, if you're looking at outside the gate, which is your wall, correct? And you're landscaping in your wall. And you would, if you want to forego how that's going to look and let that be all a part of the outside, fine. If you want to have control over it, then you need to have that split.
We're more than willing to forego it. All it takes is smelling right now.
And when, when we get to the budget side, when we go through the budgeting process, we get to the budget side, we'll go through them line by item, by line item, and put them in the appropriate silos. Because the budget could change. You may have a new line item in there, which we're going to have to determine goes where.
As I've said before, every time we have these discussions where we, as a board, want to move in a solid direction, up pops the exception. Either we're all in, or we're all out.
Bob, I'll just, I'll just remind us again that we went over this on the board, and this is no different than when we had Timber Ridge come to us and ask us for take over the landscaping. This is no different when we had Pine Woods Community ask us to take over the landscaping. And we actually give an explanation of how this does not take effect on Gateway Boulevard, because that would be in, with Gateway Greens. We would be taking over part of the HOA property. This is exactly what would be happening at Pelican Preserve. So as of right now, Bob, on the side of Gateway, geographically speaking, we do not take care. And randomly, over the years, over the six years that I've been here, here and there, we have found areas that we were maintaining and notice was given to the, to the homeowners, either an HOA or the property owners, immediately ceased. So it was clarified. As of right now, I do not believe that we're doing this. We have not identified any other areas that we're doing this. So what you're asking, you are asking to be the exception of the rule, because you be the only community where the HOA has the responsibility to maintain those assets, and you want to pawn that on 001, which is our account for an entire Gateway. So I want to make sure we're very, very clear. Yes, we're splitting hairs, because we're saying what belongs to you, it's financially your responsibility, and what belongs to us is the financial responsibility of the district as an entirety.
The district has been paying the O2 account for the area that I'm talking about for 25 years. This isn't something new. This isn't a change. We've always maintained it. Now, we paid for it O2, but now that we're changing everything with this methodology, it would properly go to O1. But oh, we don't want it, because now it's not ours. We have a number of properties that we have gotten easements from the, the title holder to allow us to continue what we've always done. This isn't any different. I don't speak to Timber Ridge, because I don't know the particulars. But this is something the district has always paid for.
In, in terms of the methodology, the methodology won't change. It, when we go to the budget line items, when we go through that part of the process, remember it's two parts. It's the budget, and then it's, we put it into the methodology. When you go to the budget part, you can bring that discussion up.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, Russ, but this group, the five of us, like to look at these things different ways on different applications. I'm just asking for uniformity.
We are giving you exactly what you asked for. Uniformity that was created within the district.
You changed Rule Six, that changed the way we looked at it.
We're not talking about Rule Six. You're talking about landscaping outside of the wall and, and inside of the wall. That's what we're talking about. I just want to make sure I'm clear in giving you an answer.
We've always maintained outside the wall in the O2 account.
We have done a lot of things in the past that if you came to do it the right way, we have changed. So this is no different than what I just explained. We weren't perfect. The board prior to us wasn't perfect. And the one that's going to come after us is not going to be. When we find errors and mistakes, we have to be...
There wasn't an error or mistake. It was a conscious decision and has always been that way. It's not an error. This isn't something that somebody missed. For 25 years, we paid for it.
Well, as of right now, we were, a new methodology was proposed, and it was explained to, the reasoning why, and, and I think it was very clear why you could do it and why you cannot do it. At the end, at the end of it...
Well, you don't want to pay for it. I understand the why. But you're taking the commercial assets, the commercial income, and that's now going to O1. But you have this one little segment is, oh, well, we don't want that. If you're taking outside the wall, by God, take outside the wall. Don't try to get a fine line down and say, oh, well, we only want this part.
It's not our property.
But we'll give you the easement to it, and then we take care of it, because we've always taken care of it.
We have, have...
That's the whole point.
It's going to be discussed at the public hearing.
Public hearing, but...
Let's go on with business.
All right.
We could vote, you know, three, two. These things can be discussed at the public hearing.
Okay. Any other questions regarding methodologies, Carol, that you'd like to Russ to cover? No? Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move to district manager reports.
All right, we've got our department heads here, so I'll turn it over to Laura for administrative monthly report.
Does anybody have any questions on my monthly report for admin?
Couldn't hear that one, so I guess...
Any questions regarding the monthly report for admin, for Laura?
From Laura.
I have none. Do you have any, Ed? None. Carol, none? Doug?
Yeah, just really quick, kind of looking ahead. Do you know if, because someone had asked me this, in the future, with park amenities, would Facilitron, could we use Facilitron for rent of the pickleball courts or reserving? So, all of our amenities could be managed, reserved, rented through Facilitron?
Yes, and actually, Pelican Preserve has a fantastic facility rental that they use that we were looking into. Ideally, we'd like to use Facilitron, but we'll be evaluating that over the next year.
Laura, one question, and I don't know if this question is, is this part of your report where we have the, it's titled...
The hours? You mean the admin, yes?
The hours, is that you?
Yes.
I know this...
Not the public works portion. If you're looking at maintenance, that would be Daniel?
Well, no, it's a question on format. For Chelsea, that lists the hours. For Daniel, it lists the hours, you know, and splits it up. But when we look at yours, you, you put, I mean, when we look at Randy's, he puts a percent. So I can look at this, and it says he, he does 14% for six. 14.6%. But I can't see that for the other ones. Could we do that for all of them?
Yes, I can add that.
Thank you.
Anything else for Laura? No? We'll go ahead and move to the next report.
Public Works, Daniel Potter. Anything for Public Works?
And the lake banks are starting to get covered with weeds all along the stone, all over, especially in Gateway Greens, and especially in my backyard. You don't want me to go out there with Roundup or anything else, because I'll probably overdo it. But the issue is, where's our vendor in getting those taken care of? And then the second part of that is the stone. We've gone into a couple of ponds, brought in extra stone to replenish that that was gone over the last four or five years. Other ponds need to be done, so I'd like to see that we get our new vendor in, and one, get rid of the weeds, get them sprayed, and get the additional stone back in the banks.
Absolutely. Daniel Potter, Public Works Director for GSCDD. Met Tower Environmental just came on with a contract for pond services. We're adapting kind of a new schedule for dry season as we're at the lower water levels to be able to spray those lake banks and those rocks where you can really see it now that the water's low, as we're in a drought and doing a lot of lake bank work, keeping the weirs open to keep the water down. We're going to do two cycles that make more sense for spraying out those lake banks, especially in your community. The, the second portion of it, we're trying to pilot how to be able to do some of that point... The second portion of it, we're trying to pilot how to be able to do some of that point repair for lake bank restoration in-house. We did one lake in Stony Brook, realized that there's a need for some equipment if I'm going to do it internally. And we're also still working with multiple vendors across the board to do some point repairs. So there's going to be more of that as we move forward as well. As you know, I'm hot and heavy right now on lake bank restoration across the board. I've got three active vendors, about to be four. So they are moving more than I think I've seen since I've gotten here.
I just have a follow-up question. So can you just go over the two cycles of weed control? What does that mean?
Basically going to be the end of rainy seasoning and at the end of rainy season. So the beginning and the end of rainy season as we catch the water going down. But with the regularly scheduled maintenance as well.
That's my question.
Yes, no, no, no. There are additional sprays.
Because I was thinking, we're going, we have a problem and we're going from monthly to twice a year.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you for clarifying what I was.
Yeah, Daniel, a question also. We're not suggesting that in the dry season that we kill whatever litorals that are on that lake bank, are we?
Depending on what the DO calls for on each lake. So in Pelican Preserve, no.
Well, I mean, okay, we, we, as a board, need to discuss going forward. Yeah. That's a whole, it's a different topic going forward about the need for litorals and whether we all support that uniformly regardless of the various DOs. We have the ability to take it into discussion and make a choice. What I want to make sure is that we're not killing the litorals because they provide a heck of a nice benefit to our erosion problem. So we're not killing them for that, okay?
So I just want to clarify for both Daniel and yourself. So residents that would like the litorals removed behind their property, if there is no requirement but development order, and if they follow within the guidelines, no erosion, and I don't recall all of them right now, but no erosion, no washouts, no other issues, they can request the removal twice per year. But we, as a district, have not, we're not following that. We're keeping the litorals as is. Only thing that we are doing per the contract is the bend not to exceed, I believe it's 10 to 12 feet, right? I think it's not to exceed 12. So that's regularly. Otherwise, we adopted what we have at Pelican, with the exception that our areas where there is no development order requirement or the development order requirement, it's silence, residents have the opportunity to request that, but only twice a year and only if they follow within the guidelines.
Correct. And I expect, I plan on bringing up at a later future meeting that we change our policy to have litorals everywhere. And that's a, I believe that's a decision that we can make because that would be consistent with the rest of the world.
One last thing. I know, Ed, we know of a couple of locations in Gateway Greens, but if you have any additional locations, feel free to email those rock point repairs that need to be done.
Hey, can we reach out to Angelo to see if they offer any public safety training around e-bikes and scooters?
We'll ask as part of the series that Randy coordinates with the sheriff's office. We can ask, yes.
Yeah, and I know, and specifically in Stony Brook, we're looking for some type of training or, training or whatever, specifically for, you know, our youth riders.
Education.
Yeah, education, yeah.
Okay. Yep, we can reach out to LCSL.
No more questions for Public Works?
I got one question for Daniel. In your report on pond, pond bank point repairs, you reference that there's two washouts on Flowway 2, and it says it was communicated to Pelican Preserve for repair. I'm a little confused about that. We don't do anything on the flowway.
That item specifically is due to a downspout issue with the HOA that we've communicated with the HOA that it needs to be repaired and fixed outside of the district purview because the damages weren't caused by anything from the erosion or from, or anything that our services have rendered there.
Like a golf court washout, that type of thing?
Yeah, it was a downspout washout.
Okay.
That's created an issue.
Did we get any, any information back around the ability to, to change the design of the weirs and those that are not adjustable, specifically like Stony Brook?
We're talking, we talked with Tetra Tech on looking at that as part of next fiscal year's budget and seeing if there's any opportunities for grants and/or what design may be required to do that.
Okay, so a little bit longer runway on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't think we have any more questions for Public Works.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
All right. Anything for utilities?
I have some.
I need a stool.
I wasn't going to say anything. So can you just give me a quick update on where we stand with order control in Stony Brook and follow up with the vendor to see what happened?
So we have submitted a site plan in order to fit what we believe is going to be the proposed unit. We are going to have to relocate the entire electrical service. So I'm currently working on making sure we can procure all the new components that we need to go ahead and do that. And I will be looking next week to try to line up a vendor to accommodate that because it's going to entail having an FPL disconnect and completely moving the meter location and everything.
Okay. And a follow-up question. So we were going to reach out to the current vendor to ask what happened, why didn't, you know, regarding the leak, right? Is he going to provide us a report of all the lift stations that he currently maintains to tell us that, are we having the same problem and other lift stations that were just not notified by residents? Or are we just going to wait for residents to come and tell us there's a problem? I just, I think I want a more in-depth report from the current vendor because I think if we had received that and dug into that, we wouldn't have this problem with Stony Brook for so long.
So on the, on the repairs that needed to be made, some of them have been made. Some, there are some parts that were backordered. They did some temporary things to alleviate any external airflow that, where they, specifically on top of the, the drums, there were two doors that the seals had rotted around. And so they had to order those, and they haven't gotten those in yet.
Okay, my final question, I guess, more direct. Have we required a vendor to go and visit every single lift station and give us a detailed report? Is this working orders or this is not working orders? And then this one we need repairs or not? I just want to make sure that the vendor touched every single lift station within the three-month periods that we had this notice and that we know what needs to be done.
The two units that are leased, they do visit them each month.
Just the two units?
Yes.
Okay.
The Girl Scout lift station and the Stony Brook lift station.
We have not received the report. We've received the report of what has been repaired to date, but we have not received the report of what failed.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill? No, thank you, Bill. All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move to district attorney.
It's nice working now. I actually, I actually have it working. Bear with me a second here. A couple of things. One, following up on what Steve Agapi mentioned about Santa Luz, I've been in communication with the attorney for Lennar that's assigned, that's now handling it. She was tied up in trial preparation, so I received an email from her apologizing for not getting back with me, and hopefully I'll have a conversation with her next week. Steve and I had a nice conversation, have also had conversations with Chelsea about the basis for this. So I'll report back as to the conversation I had with the attorney for Lennar to keep pushing him for this. One item that is not in my report, at the beginning of the meeting, we intended to have a walk-on from the manager and the district council. It's a proposed resolution we handed out, I think it's in front of you, Resolution 2025-12. It involves SRF funding. What that does, the description of the resolution that's referenced in here is Resolution 2024-14. There were some scribblers errors as to the nature of the projects that were part of that, as well as the pledged revenue source. And so the SRF personnel stated they needed to match up the resolution with my opinion letter. So what we would ask the board to do is consider adopting and asking the public as any comment on Resolution 2025-12 that references that the board, district intends to enter into loan agreements for DEP under SRF funding. It's project CW3604H. It's for the construction and design loans. Construction loan FY 2025, lake bank restoration. The design loan FY 2026, lake bank restoration. It clarifies that the pledged revenues are non-adverum assessments. And it rescinds the prior Resolution 2024-14. And the resolution's effective, the term is nunc pro nunc, now for then, as of November 7th, 2024. We would ask the board to approve and adopt Resolution 2025-12.
So, so we have a motion by Doug, second by Bob. Bob, in favor, say aye.
A question?
Hold on.
Question? That question?
Go ahead.
Tony, Section 10, what does that Latin verbiage mean?
Now for then. Nunc pro nunc means now for then. In other words, we're doing it now, but it's effective as of a time in the past. Nunc pro nunc.
So this is effective November 7th, 2024, but we're doing it now?
Correct. Because we, and it's important from the standpoint of the funding and the actions with DEP. Is that correct, Laura?
Laura? The original resolution was, was approved on November 7th of 2024. That's how we made the effective date of this one, the same as that.
Any other questions? All right, so we'll go ahead and call or vote. In favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Go ahead, Tony.
So a few other items, if I may, with regards to the assessment methodology, we've already talked about that, been assisting staff in drafting the resolution as well as reviewing the draft reports. The Chinopee contract, this is one of those amazing. Still trying to address the liability issues, going back and forth with the vendor to make sure that the district has adequate insurance in place or the vendor has adequate insurance in place to protect the district. The meter replacement project, a number of documents reviewed for that after the closing. The closing was finished on March 3rd. The irrigation meter, Stony Brook Village, I had a follow-up conversation with Mr. Charles Mann's legal assistant and also sent the revised draft quitclaim bill of sale. This is for irrigation meters in Stony Brook Village that the district needs to make sure we have title to before we replace them as part of the meter replacement project. Apparently it got slipped to the cracks back, back in the day '03 or '04. The, quickly go through the Stony Brook roads and streets. I have a partial draft of the pre-litigation settlement agreement. I got sidetracked, I apologize. I had family and medical matters this week. That kind of took up more time than I had anticipated. Santa Luz, I mentioned that, working with Stephen on that. Let's see here. The RFP for audit, that's completed. Of course, irrigation, it's on hold. Storage tank MOU and lease, that's for the district to have a storage tank on the Lee County Utilities Plant Site that's been provided. The RFP, this is for a separate engineer, CCNA, for the Community Development Block Grant Program. It requires all the types of additional criteria that's been completed. Daniels Parkway, as mentioned in there, completed the upsized report, upsized agreement where they, Daniels Parkway, I mean, folks would upsize a water line, we would pay the difference and the cost. And I'm working on the meter agreement for the irrigation wells where the district would allow them, the irrigation wells, they would put meters on it, and the district would charge them rates under our rate schedule. And anything else the board has?
Anybody? No? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Future board business, agenda management. So I guess instead of us going line item by line item, I'll just ask each board supervisor if they'd like to add anything or they have any questions regarding, anything that's on the agenda management report. Go ahead, Carol.
Yeah. So at the next meeting, we're having a budget workshop. That's our workshop for things. What's the other item?
The first one is capital projects discussion and, you caught me on the second one, but there are two items because it related to the last meeting you requested one.
Correct.
That's on that.
Okay. Are we going to have a moment to talk about methodology at that workshop?
The board so chooses. Carol, that's what it was. You, you requested the silos, the budget discussion with the silos. And that's, that's the second item.
So as we go line item by line item, we know what silo or what bucket this will be put in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can you, I think we may have gotten estimates on this before, but I cannot remember because I think it's been a couple of years. But we have talked in the past about that on the, on the FPL easement, the Linear Park, the gravel area where the pavement stops and it goes to the road. I thought we got some quotes on paving that in the past. Can we just resurrect that and just see?
Yeah.
What the cost is on that? And in addition, maybe talking to Lee County about establishing a crosswalk there. For one, it's, it's not safe. And it's used quite a bit by residents, whether they're biking or walking or whatever. So if we could just maybe take a look at it, both from paving and would the county support a crosswalk there just due to the existing? FPL easement to the other side, yeah.
On Griffin or on Gateway?
Gateway. On the Gateway side.
Yep. We'll get some numbers as part of budget discussions.
Thank you.
So since we're going to start into the budget at the next meeting, the first part of April, can we then have the budget on every agenda also in case people want to comment on it or figure out what, what bucket they want to put everything in?
It's already scheduled on the agenda management to be as a workshop for the first meeting each month and on every single meeting between now and August when we have the public hearing.
Thank you.
Anything else, Carol? Ed, Bob, Doug? Nothing else? All right. So do we want to recess? Tony?
To recess and then roll into the public hearing?
Okay. Yeah.
No, the, I have the legal notice in front of me. I have the legal notice in front of me, and it says it was scheduled beginning at 3:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. So if the board wishes to recess, they can, or they can go right into the public hearing.
I know. All right, so let's go ahead and take a recess of five minutes. It's 4:11. All right, so let's go ahead and take a recess of five minutes, it's four eleven.
We don't really have a lot of time. That's a double word. In essence. Again, if you're not gonna be called in. If you're not gonna be hired, you're in the, you're a stand. So that's what I don't get. Next coming is so.
Well, the thing is, the reason it was done that way for twenty years is because you had chapter six, and then chapter six is gone.
That's right. And just, just, this mic is off also.
I don't know for sure that it's muted.
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
Okay, I'm coming. Sometimes drop the ball there. I'm sorry. And again, and again, and again, that's what they don't, this is a process. That's all we're doing. It's a formula.
Maybe we've done that before.
If they want to see.
I know. That's what I said about, they'll say, Ken. It's kind of like.
You know, that, that gets back to my. I'm going to nationals in two years. It looks like you're at an IU basketball game with all the red shirts.
All right, everyone, it's four twenty. We went over a little bit of this five minute recess, so I'll ask if everybody can take their seats. All right, thank you. So Tony, so we'll go ahead and just.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the board has reconvened its meeting. I would suggest that, just for the record, at the present time, the board is scheduled to hold a public hearing that was noticed and advertised, properly noticed and advertised in the Fort Myers News Press. I have a copy of the affidavit of publication in the original affidavit. Be provided to district staff, may placed in the record. And it was known, it was placed in the Fort Myers News Press, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Notice of public hearing for the board supervisors, excuse me. And the purpose of the public hearing is to consider approving a proposed amended and restated master operations and maintenance special assessment methodology, substantially revising, amending and restating the district's twenty twenty one master operations and maintenance special assessment methodology. And the board at this meeting and public hearing will consider approving these revisions in the report. And will consider approving the amended and restated operations and maintenance assessment methodology prepared by Real Estate Econometrics, Inc. And if approved and adopted, the, the twenty twenty five assessment report will be utilized by the district and the board in preparing and adopting the district's fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget and thereafter unless subsequently revised. And, and again, the, as I mentioned before, when the board sets the public hearing on the budget adoption and the adoption of the assessment role, the board will again utilize this methodology report and the board can make changes, corrections at that time also, because we are not levying any ad lorum, non ad lorum assessments today. So it's properly noticed. What I would also suggest though, that anyone who appears, if they have any statements in writing or that they want to provide, make that part of the record. And we also have, will make part of the record, Mr. Hedges' email to Mr. Geppert with regards to the questions that Mr. Hedges had. And Laura or Chelsea, are there any other comments that you have received by email or fax? We have Ms. Kalinsky's letter, Jennifer Kalinsky's letter of March seventeenth, twenty twenty five, with all its attachments, that will also be included as part of the record.
I do not have any more records or requests that have not already been provided to the board, just those two.
Okay. And what I would suggest, Madam Chair, is the board have a motion to open the public hearing, to take comment from the public. Or you want to have a presentation, have, in the public hearing, your presentation by Mr. Wire, after initially having a presentation by Mr. Agapi with the engineer's report. Chelsea, are you fine with that?
Have Tetra Tech engineer report, then Mr. Wire, and then public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and we'll open the public hearing.
I think it'd be helpful in this instance to have a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ed, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Four one, motion passes. So we'll go ahead and we'll have a district engineer.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. So our role in this matter was to provide engineering support to Russ. And we did that in the form of this engineer's report. The report essentially just outlines these, these different categories and provides a general background of all these different assets that Gateway owns and operates and maintains. So first up, we talked about the waterway management, all the stormwater system that is inside of Gateway, the numerous lakes and ponds and everything that's involved in that, from the swales, ditches, conservation areas, like bank restoration, the weers. So we pretty much provided that general information as a background in here. And we also provided some information for Russ to use to assist in the assessment methodology, which was, we provided information about the rational method, which is a, a common method used in Florida to determine the amount of runoff that is generated from different types of properties with different types of land uses. So that information is in this report and we provide resources in here to demonstrate the typical values from different types of land uses, whether it's a golf course or a single family home or a commercial property. And Russ was able to use those in his assessment methodology. The next category we looked at were roadways, where we identify all the roads that are owned by Gateway. We also identify parts of roads that are not owned by Gateway that they are responsible for maintaining, including lighting, landscaping, irrigation, like tree line outside of Pelican Preserve that they're on the hook for. This also applies to the roads owned by Lee County, including Gateway Boulevard, Griffin Drive and others. We also reference in here the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is a pretty well-used resource for coming up with trip generation. And Russ used that and his assessment methodology also. The next category we looked at were parks and rec, where we essentially just list the, the recreational facilities that Gateway does own and, and what those are. And lastly, it's administration and it's kind of just a general overview of Gateway's administration and hierarchy. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for district engineer? Bob? No questions?
Okay.
We'll go ahead and move into Russ.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. For the record, I'm Russ Wire, Real Estate Econometrics President and your real estate, or your, I'm sorry, your assessment methodology consultant. A little bit of background, first of all, back in October of last year, we were asked to prepare and amend and restate the assessment methodology report to our original two thousand and twenty report in light of the repeal of chapter six. And a little bit of background about me, I've been twenty years in the Community Development District Management and Consulting. I manage six districts here in Southwest Florida. Five of them are mixed use and one of them are commercial. So I do what Chelsea does, but I do it under six different districts. I've created over seventy five operations and maintenance and bond issue assessment methodology reports across the state, including Gateway, Ave Maria and Collier County, I do all of their bond issues. The Seminole Improvement District, which is the city of West Lake in Palm Beach County, Victory Park in Cape Coral, which is a new commercial mixed use project that's coming up. Cypress Shadows here in Estero, Chevelle West in Tampa, Stevens Plantation in Orlando. Just to give you a little smattering that I do it around the state. Also, I do some work for governments as well when they are looking at doing their assessments. I've worked with the Upper Captiva Fire Department, Upper Captiva, and also the Hillsborough County in Tampa. I did an assessment methodology for them when they were doing a dredging project. I've testified in courts and in front of many district boards under doing this type of work. I've been GS CDD's assessment methodology consultant for over six years, so I'm very familiar with the property. And I'm qualified, have been qualified as an expert witness in assessment methodology development. First thing I want to do is to the board, because we've been, we've had five, five or six workshops. We've been doing this since the end of October. And each way, after each workshop, I go away with, with something new to work with. And at the last workshop, they, they requested me to make a couple of changes to the report and I wanted to report those back to you. First was to remove the Lee County Sheriff's Patrol Budget from the general administrative budget to the, to a Gateway specific budget, which we ended up doing, if you saw the report, that was in your packet. I needed to add language to the water management section. That said, the water management budgets and calculations remain basically as a current methodology, with the exception of the common flowways. So that was done as well. And then move the outs, and we keep using outside the gate, inside the gate landscaping portion of the Pelican Preserve budget to the Gateway budget, which I did. And I know I talked about Mr. Hedges' comments, I talked about those earlier. What we did there, we had to use a portion of the old one to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples when we did the current methodology, or the current, comparing the apples, apples to the current assessments and what they would have been if we had this methodology last year or for this fiscal year. So as it, as it turns out, as I had mentioned, we will make sure that there will be, when we go forward, depending on how the board determines what they're going to do, we will, we will have a proposal for the landscaping from the sidewalk east or west, and then another proposal from the sidewalk east up to the wall of Pelican Preserve. Either all of that will go to Gateway or it'll be split, however the, the board determines to do that. All of those changes are included in the report, again, that's in your packet. So I briefly want to go over the methodology and it won't take a ton of time. I was hoping we had visual where I could have said, can you go to page two so you can see the, the calculations, how they were done? But there's two parts to it. First is the cost allocation and that is where we take the budget and we take the cost of the budget and put them into benefit measurement categories and we affectionately call those silos. We put them into particular silos and they are roadway costs, water management costs, park and recreation costs, general administrative costs, which is shared by everybody. Pelican Reserve's specific administrative costs, which, which would be your, like you have a patrol in there, you have security, all of that is specific to Pelican Reserve. So that is in a Pelican Reserve's specific administrative cost. And the Gateway's specific administrative cost, which currently is just the, the Lee Sheriff's Patrol. And that amount is put specifically for Gateway, so it was allocated among the Pel, or the Gateway side of the ledger. Now, there's a two-pronged test to it. Are there special and peculiar benefits to each parcel that flow from the logical relationship of the operations and maintenance of the district improvements to the parcels? And are the assessments fairly and reasonably allocated according to reasonable estimates of benefits that are consistent with each land use category? There is, there is a lot of leeway where you can come up with these, but, but we try and get it as, as, I don't want to say scientific as possible, we try to have as best backup material where we can. And for instance, as we talked about earlier, and thanks to Stephen, he told you how we used the trip generation for roadways and we were able to use pervious and impervious surfaces. So for, for the layman, the impervious surface means. So for the layman, the impervious surface means the water can't go into it, so your house and all of that is all measured. Each property is measured, both pervious and impervious, and that data comes from the Lee County Property Appraiser. And so we measure that, that's 100% into the water management system, the 20% of the pervious surfaces, which is grass and all of that, that still has a flow to it, and that's what Stephen was referring to earlier. So each one of those are measured. And then we also use, which we're using now for the administrative costs and the parks and recreational costs, and that is EAU or an equivalent assessment unit. And in terms of the specific administrative costs and, I'm sorry, the general administrative costs, those were done all with EAUs, as was the parks and rec, although there was a reduction on the EAUs to a .15 for the parks and rec portion, for all the properties that were outside of the Gateway residential. So, let me go through them real quickly. On the roads, again, we based it on trip generation, and I would have said, look at pages 12 to 15. We looked for a common, a common amount that everybody would share in the cost of that for roadway, and everybody's trip generation would be calculated towards that, and we found the least costly road and landscaping. And then that was spread among everybody, and then the rest of the cost, after you deducted that, the rest of the cost for Pelican Reserve roads went to Pelican Reserve, the rest of the Gateway roads went to Gateway, and they were allocated based on trip generation. And within a couple of things, when we're looking at outside of Pelican Reserve, the trip generation for a single family would be 9.4 trips per day, and a multifamily is 4.81. And then I found a specific category for age-restricted communities and inside of a gate, and it was 4.31. So if you were a single family in Pelican Reserve or a multifamily in Pelican Reserve, you still had the same trip generation. Anyway, we had the lowest base cost in terms of roads and landscaping, and we spread them among everybody, and then the road lengths, that was based on the cost that we had in the budget, and the road lengths, which was provided by Stephen. And we created a cost per linear foot. And then the remaining budget, again, was split between Pelican Reserve and Gateway. When it was split, it was just put back into the categories where they came from, and then C5 and tree line commercial are included now in the Gateway road costs, as they were not allocated any road costs in the past. But now they're benefiting from roads, they should be benefiting from that, so they have been put into the Gateway side. They weren't in the Pelican Reserve side either. Pelican, oh, yeah, Pelican Reserve road costs are just allocated among the residential and the golf course property that's inside the gate. So the trip gener, you know, everybody had a 4.31, whatever I said that was. Then the golf course had it on a per-hole basis, I think it was 30 trips per hole, so they ended up 27 holes times 30, that was their trip generation. And we added up all the trips, and then we allocated them accordingly based on the percentage of the total. Did the same thing over at Gateway. And the commercial, just mostly are Pelican Reserve people, but to understand, on the commercial side, there are different uses that have different trip generation. An office has a different trip generation than a bank, than a restaurant, and those are all calculated when we did the Gateway side of that and added in the total. In the water management side, the budget cost is determined, again, for Pelican Reserve and Gateway, just as in the past. It was based on the pervious and impervious surfaces of each of the parcels within those areas, the assessed lands. And then this time, we took the common flowways. There's, how many is there, three or four in the Gateway side and one in the Pelican Reserve side? Took those costs, put them together, and then the difference was $1,800, $1,900 roughly. So $1,900 more went into Pelican Reserve, $1,900 less went into Gateway, and it was pennies in terms of the assessment. Parks and rec, again, we did the parks and rec, and that included the salaries and wages. Are portioned by an equal assessment units where all Gateway residential parcels, except for Arborwood and C5, were assigned one EAU. And then all Pelican Reserve residential parcels, Arborwood, C5, and all tree line commercial parcels, all Gateway commercial parcels, and the two golf courses were assigned a .15 EAU. And that's how the parks and rec were allocated. Overall administration, every parcel was assigned an EAU of one and allocated that portion of the overall administrative budget accordingly. So a Gateway unit was a one, a Pelican Reserve unit was a one, the golf course was a one in both places, each commercial parcel was a one. That's how that was allocated. The Gateway-specific administration, again, was a $30,000 line item that the Lee County Sheriff patrols are specific to Gateway, so we pulled that out of the general administrative budget, did that specifically for Gateway, and that was allocated on an EAU basis. The Pelican Reserve-specific administration, that budget was $496,000, $497,000, and a lot of that had to do with, first of all, you have Lee County, or the Fort Myers, correct, there's the Fort Myers Police Patrol in there, you also have your own patrol, you have a security gate, and all of that was specifically to Pelican Reserve. And that was done the same way, the cost was allocated to the Pelican Reserve parcels only on a one EAU basis. So when you add all of that up, and you wanted to compare it to last year's assessment, or this year's assessment that you currently paid with your, on your property tax bill, in Pelican Reserve, the single-family units went down by $2.31, the multifamily went up by $18 per unit, the golf course was reduced significantly, and that had to do with administrative costs and where they were allocated in the past. The water management assessment was calculated for tree line and commercial and C5 because they're a part of your water management system. So their pervious and impervious surfaces were included in the Pelican Reserve side of the equation. And then under the Gateway assessments, the single-family went up by about $20, multifamily went down by about seven, Arborwood went down significantly, significantly $170, and the reason being is they treated their, their parks and rec went from a one to a .15, so that dropped pretty, pretty good. The Gateway commercial came down a little bit as well because of the administrative costs, although they were now allocated parks and rec by .15 versus a one before. And then the two that went up were the tree line commercial went up and the C5 because they weren't being allocated for roadways before. And that is, if you've seen it, the report, the report's in the packet, it's online, and that's the last page before the conclusion, so.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, Tony. You can have.
Russ, for clarification, you say it went down. The numbers in there, from the standpoint of what are the numbers and the budget numbers, you were utilizing the previously approved current fiscal year 2024, '25 numbers for illustrative purposes only? Is that correct?
That's for purposes only, that is correct.
Correct. In other words, we are not levying any, there's no budget numbers yet to assign to it, but this is for illustrative, to indicate to the public and to the board what the impact could be if this had been in place last year, is that correct?
That's correct. So if the budget, you know, if this year's budget goes up over next year, it will go up. If they go down, it'll go down. But this was done for illustrative purposes, as Mr. Pierce had said, so that you can compare to what you, what was on your tax bill this year and what it could be, what it could have been if we had this methodology in place.
Russ, can you just clarify again, the 231 and the 18, what was the classification to those? 231 was for, for Pelican?
I'm sorry.
Single?
Oh, I'm sorry, the single family went down by $2.
Yeah, so then, and then the 18 was for multi?
The 18 was multifamily, that's correct.
Multi, okay, thank you.
Any questions for Russ?
I'm sorry.
No, I was asking if they had any questions for you, the board, I was going to start with the board.
Do you have any questions?
I do not. Do you have any questions, Bob?
No.
Ed?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Russ, I have a question for you, and Tony, I have a question for you. Russ, were all the provisions of Chapters 171, 189, 190, and 197 of the Florida statutes met by the preparation of this document?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Tony, were all of the public notices and all the requirements for public notification met for the preparation of this public hearing?
In my opinion, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so with no questions from the board, I will go ahead, that's what I was going to say, I'll go ahead and open for public comment, and I did receive one request from Tom, and I will go ahead and honor your request. I believe you only have four speakers.
Correct, I have four speakers, and I think you said 10 minutes?
Yeah, so 10 minutes would be, okay.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and we'll start with you.
What's, what time?
Just for clarification, in a public hearing, there's no time limit, right?
Yes, you can set time limits in a public hearing.
Yeah, we have said.
Yes.
It's 10 minutes, it's 10 minutes plenty.
I think you should tell them if there are time limits. My understanding is a public hearing.
10 minutes. Go ahead.
I don't think this is you.
Yes, so we're happy with the 10 minutes.
Flavia, just to be clear, Mr. Shaner had reached out to you prior to today's meeting and requested additional time?
Correct. And I have no other requests besides this.
Okay, and just a reminder that to please state your name and who you're on here on behalf of and representing before you begin your comments.
Good afternoon. I am Tom Shaner, Vice President of the Pelican Preserve Community Association, PPCA. I am here this afternoon representing the more than 5,000 residents and the 2,498 homes that make up our wonderful community. Before I offer the PPCA's objections to your proposed operation and maintenance assessment methodology, I would like to state that Pelican Reserve never should have been considered to be a part of the Gateway Services Community Development District. It was incorporated into the CDD solely to assist its developer in securing beneficial bonding and tax status. Unlike any other portion of the CDD, Pelican Reserve resides exclusively in the city of Fort Myers and was developed with its town center recreational facilities. Ergo, it should not be treated in the same manner as the rest of Gateway. Nevertheless, we are here today, so we must attempt to work cooperatively with the CDD and its Board of Supervisors. Again, before I elaborate on our concerns relative to the proposed methodology, I would like to stress that we have attempted on many occasions to address our concerns by seeking opportunities for positive cooperative discussion. Instead of engaging with us to cooperatively resolve our differences from the onset, this board has rejected those opportunities. As a result, I am here today as a follow-up to prior written and stated objections, which I will again reiterate for the public record. PPCA objects to the adoption of the proposed methodology as its development was arbitrary and not fairly and reasonably allocated. Specifically, we object to the baseline methodology for the roadways and landscapes, Pelican Reserve landowners receiving an assessment for parks and recreation without regard to the historical determination that no benefits are received, capital outlays included in the administrative portion of the proposal, which have never been allocated to Pelican Reserve in nearly 25 years, dispensing with time cards for ascribing benefit from staff time, and perhaps most significantly at this meeting, I'll disagree with counsel, the lack of written notice provided to residents for the adoption of the proposed methodology. Our previously provided objections and proposed alternatives were outlined and attached in our formal objection letter sent to the District's Council on March 17. As stated earlier, PPCA has routinely attempted to resolve its concerns by sit-down conversation and has requested a meeting between the experts prior to the adoption of the proposed methodology. Unfortunately, the district's apparent effort to continue to avoid healthy dialogue was to only offer one day and one small block of time for such a compromise opportunity, a time when remarkably, as a coincidence, PPCA's expert was in court and had absolutely no flexibility. We offered several alternatives, but unfortunately, they were dismissed. I am asking again that the district delay the adoption of the proposed methodology to allow the parties an opportunity to sit down and discuss in a collaborative and non-adversarial manner. Furthermore, as was previously addressed, we assert that the notice provided by the district for the adoption of the proposed methodology is inadequate under Chapter 197 Florida statute. That statute clearly outlines the notice requires for changes in assessment. It requires that both mailed and published notice be provided to affected residents when, as in this case, there is a change in the purpose or use of such assessment. Our March 17th letter of objection provided case law supporting this claim. Residents in the district, residents of the Gateway and Pelican Reserve communities did not receive the required mailed notice. We assert that such inadequate notice could result in these proceedings being deemed invalid. Still, we ask, we again ask that the district not take any action today to adopt the proposed methodology, but instead to take the time to have the experts meet in a collaborative discussion aimed at bringing back additional options to the district for its consideration. As suggested in our letter of March 17, one option to save time and expense may be to consider delaying adoption of the proposed methodology until the district intends to hold its assessment hearings. PPCA is meaningfully attempting to dialogue and collaborate with the district to address its concerns. Perhaps the district, if the district had engaged in such a process from the onset, we would not be here today. Pelican Reserve versing Gateway instead of cooperating for a better district. In conclusion, and to restate, PPCA believes that the assessment allocation of the proposed methodology is arbitrary and not fairly and reasonably allocated. Nevertheless, we reiterate that we do not wish to pursue legal remedies against the district, but rather to sit down and discuss alternative methodologies based on prior findings of the district, and to consider PPCA's perpetual ownership and operation of certain categories of improvements to avoid expensive and protracted litigation. Thank you.
Before you sit down, can you please confirm for the record that you are here representing and appearing on behalf of the Pelican Preserve Community Association, Inc.?
As I stated at the beginning, I am the Vice President of the Community Association, and I am here representing that association and the members therefore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Go ahead and call the next speaker.
Next up, we have Carol Brocki, who is here representing the Residents Alliance. And just a reminder, if you two could state your name and who you're on behalf of and representing.
Do you have to tell what year I was born?
No, I don't have to give a DNA sample either, you're good.
My name is Carol Brocki. I'm the President of the Residents Alliance and representing those individuals. Also, I live at 10509 Belavista in Pelican Reserve. Did I get everything? Yes? Okay. Yes, okay. There's a saying, the devil is in the details. I think today, the devil is in the numbers and the benefits. We really want all the i's dotted and the t's crossed to get the assessment right. My one question is, when we go through the budget process, going through, will, if there's kinks or errors in the assessment methodology, will they be changed at that time? When you plug in the numbers and they go, this doesn't work? That's one question that I really have. There are a lot of questions that affect all residents in all of the CDD district, both Gateway and CDD. Why are there capital costs in admin? Why aren't all the tree line landscaping costs included? Why hasn't the 2025 budget figures been plugged in the total new methodology? the total new methodology? Where is the data to support the individual admin costs? Not just the sheriffs and the Fort Myers police, but all the admin costs for everyone? We ask during the agenda meetings after the workshops for those details and have yet not received them. You know, there's basically an elephant in the room. I've been in Pelican Preserve over 24 years, have worked closely with the Gateway CDD. There's a lot of positives. Your Kenny Hall and Public Utilities was absolutely fantastic. Working with Tony Pierce at city meetings as we go through. Bob Gephardt, who has the expertise in ponds, is willingly to share with the Gateway people to save Gateway people money based on our expertise in dealing with the pond issues. There's so much talk about we're one Gateway, but the talk seems to all center around our wallets. All of the board members have been elected to represent all of Gateway. They need to champion and protect all Gateway residents and all Pelican Preserve residents. The champion and protection is vital, and that keeps us as one district. We talk about one district, but our actions don't match it. None of the Pelican Preserve residents were invited to the park expansion for Gateway. We didn't even know about it. We didn't receive the survey until after the park vote was taken, the $2.6 million park. And not all Pelican Preserve residents were given the survey. Why don't there be a method or a total database so that there is communication to all residents? Yes, you guys have got a great newsletter, but not everybody gets it. Our actions are important. Excuse me for my hearing aids, they're talking to myself. Wrong time. It's really important that the staff have constant contact information. Let me, maybe that, yeah, that turns it off. We, oop, turn it off somewhere there. Sorry, it's wonderful having hearing aids and not knowing what to do with them. The 2020 board assessment methodology really stressed benefit, benefit, benefit. Specific benefits, general benefits, peculiar benefits. And my expectation for going through the five months of meetings on the workshops and attending all of those meetings was that the exercise would resemble the 2020 assessment. The fact that there would be more discussion about benefits. In the previous 2023, they talked about parks and recs and how it would increase the value of a Gateway home. Well, that's not the case with a Pelican home, that by having a gate, park, and recs, it actually lowers the value of our home. And I think that would be a good mark for the assessment lineage. Also, in one of the other meetings, I asked for the numbers that were in the silos, because when we went to the five months of meetings, it was silo, 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 silo. This is what we do, this is how we determine the benefits, silos. We get toward admin, and all of a sudden, it's, we're not, we're taking everything out of the silos and we're going to put it in admin. And we ask at that time for the numbers. What would the numbers be? Because they were pretty good for when they were in silos. And then they all upped and changed when they went into all admin. And we asked for those numbers. I mean, I spoke at that time, I never received them, so. Just let's get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Who's your next speaker?
All right, next up, we have Ed Hedges, who is here on behalf of PPAC. If you could please state your name and that you are here representing and appearing on behalf of PPAC.
Med Hedges, live at 10532 Azura Drive. Good afternoon, I'm also the PPAC Vice Chair, and I've been trying to assimilate this assessment methodology and what the impact would be on our 25 budget and assessments. First, I want to state that the assessment methodology reports provides no detail on how the individual budget items are mapped to specific assessment categories. And so it's impossible to really know the full impact of the change, that these changes in the methodology, if those items aren't correctly categorized. I've attempted to duplicate Russ's budget numbers presented in the report, and it appears that many budget line items may be missing or improperly categorized, in my opinion. I'll provide the board a list of what I came up with for comparison. I will note that the new assessment methodology only provides $787,000 in water management for Pelican, which doesn't even cover our 804,000 pond budget, let alone the additional new flowway allocation. Secondly, there's been a lot of discussion on the allocation of the landscaping along tree line. The earlier memo stated that the historical factor of 12.05% was applied to the total $911,000 landscaping subcommittee budget to derive the $110,000 cost for outside-the-gate roadway landscaping. The total PPAC landscaping budget includes several line items for monument maintenance and holiday lighting that should not be allocated to roadway landscaping. If you subtract those, it's only $866,000. So it would be something less than $110,000 if the 12.05% factor was applied to that. In the February 27 memo, an Ameriscape budget of $200,000 for outside-the-gate landscaping was presented. That's 35% of the Ameriscape landscape maintenance bid of $576,000 for next year. But that doesn't include additional items like tree trimming and plant replacement. So the final report used 80/20 split to allocate the original $110,000 allocation. And I believe this understates how much of the PPAC landscape budget should be shifted to Gateway under the new methodology and isn't accounted for in his comparison numbers. So I don't know how we're going to allocate the landscaping to determine the outside of the gate in the new methodology. Are we going to use the undocumented legacy 12.05%? Or are we going to use the 35% based on the Ameriscape budget estimate? If you use, I think the board needs to determine what methodology is going to be used to make that. If you use the 35%, that ends up being about a $240,000 shift of that landscaping budget to Gateway. Another approach would be to calculate the outside gate allocation as a percentage of the landscaped roadway in Pelican. That's approximately 18.7%. That would result in $130,000 allocation to Gateway. Going forward, either would be more reasonable than the continued use of an undocumented historical factor. Finally, I will state my concern that I expressed at a previous meeting about the capital project contribute, how the capital contributions will be handled within the new methodology. It's very unclear to me how they're going to be handled. And capital projects are handled very differently between the OO2 Pelican and the OO1 Gateway funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Who's our next and final speaker?
I have one more.
Yeah, next and final.
Yep, Philip Rovner. And if you could please state, you didn't list anything, but if you are here on behalf of and representing someone, please state that for the record. You're not going to? Okay.
All right, so with no other speakers?
I have no one else signed up.
All right, so let's go for discussion of this board.
Flavia?
Yes.
Flavia, may I make a couple clarifications?
Sure, please.
So I know it was made mention in public comment during the regular session, or it might have been now, how Pelican is paying for the new construction of the Parks and Rec amenities. That is not the case. For the contract that was recently approved to OAK, Pelican Preserve is not paying any into the Parks and Rec new construction. Now, depending on what this board decides with maintenance and O and M moving forward in this methodology, that may change or not. But capital investment, Pelican pays zero right now for that park project, that $2.5 million number that I think Carol mentioned. Staff has asked multiple times to the Residents Alliance and to the Community Association, the Pelican Preserve Community Association, for all of the emails and contact information of their residents, and we have been denied countless times. So it is not for a failed attempt of staff to try to get their communication out. We send it out to the Community Association. We rely on them to pass that on to their contacts. We have constant contact, which all residents can sign up for. For those who have signed up, that's how you've gotten the newsletters. Again, we're trying different means of communication. The groundbreaking ceremony, that was on local news, that was sent out via email communications, posted on our website, on social media. We are making active attempts at getting the information out to our residents. We've put up variable message boards for Parks and Rec events that we have. We have one in Pelican right now for our meter box project. So it's not for a lack of trying from staff to try to get the communication out, and I want to make that abundantly clear.
Thank you, Chelsea. Anything else, Laura?
No.
All right, so.
Yeah. Is this on again? Chelsea, I totally agree with what you've said. We have tried a number of times, and we haven't gotten the reception that we would like to have for that. And I'll just leave it at that for a couple of years, not just with this current project.
Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, if the board. If the board is ready to close the public hearing.
And then we can go back to the regular board meeting?
No, then you go back to discussion to take action on the resolution and consideration of approving the amended and restated master methodology.
I would make the motion then that we close the public hearing. Go back to the board meeting.
At the chance. Motion to, motion, motion to.
Does anyone else want to speak?
I do know that Chelsea was asking them individually, because I was there, if they wanted to speak or not. But this is the time. Is anybody else who would like to speak? Here, none? We'll go ahead and move. Yes, please, can you please come up over here for us, Vince? Thank you.
Yeah, Vince LaFredo, 9871 Blue Stone Circle in Stony Brook. Have attended a number of CDD meetings over the years. I've been against it, the board's heard me on this Parks and Rec. It's inflicting a lot of expenses on all of us. And when the methodology came up, I listened intently when they had the town hall at the high school. And my issue is on the methodology and Pelican Preserve paying into it. The shocker here today was that the no monies are coming out of Pelican towards the Parks and Rec. Every one of our communities, at least down in Stony Brook, we have all the amenities that they're going to put in here. We have a swimming pool, we have basketball courts, tennis courts, all the things that they want to put in. So when I've looked at statutes for control of community districts, I've seen that duplicity of services are not something that the state of Florida wanted when they put these things together. They were for builders. And this is why I intently come to these meetings and listen, particularly with some of the eloquent people from Pelican on this. And I think we're reaching a peak here. When we're paying our HOA fees and we see what's going on there, and now we have an additional fee, in addition, we're paying taxes to Fort Myersly County. And what we're looking at is inflation, which has hit us all in the last four or five years. I really disagree with the first methodology of 2020. And this one here kind of shocked me today. So in essence, that's my opinion from Stony Brook. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident, very interested in expenditures of government, and I think we're in a bad path. But that's my opinion, I'll just pass it to that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Vince. So we'll go ahead and we'll make a motion to close the public hearing. So, did we have a motion before? We had a motion by Ed, right? Ed made a motion to close the public hearing. And second by Doug Banks. And all in favor, say aye. Aye, in your pose? Okay, 3-2, passes. Close the public hearing. Go ahead, Ed.
Madam Chairman, on the basis that we have received from our consultant on the preparation of this document that it was prepared in accordance with the various applicable sections of Chapters 170, 189, 197 of the Florida statutes, and our attorney has confirmed that public notice was properly given on the public hearing we've had, I hereby make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-11 adopting the 2025 amended and restated master operations and maintenance assessment methodology report as prepared by Real Estate Econometrics dated March 20, 2025.
I believe Tony has one correction. Can you speak in the microphone, Tony?
Let me find, yes, I apologize.
We are approving, your motion is to approve the resolution.
Yes, what'd I say?
Yeah.
Yeah, to approve Resolution 2025-11.
Bear with me as to the text of that resolution. Somehow I've lost the agenda item here on my iPad, on my laptop. As indicated in the title of the resolution, it's approving the 2025 amended and restated operations and maintenance assessment methodology report dated, actually should be dated March 20, 2025. It says, the title says February 20, 2025. We need to fix the title. It's March 20, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye. Aye, in your pose?
Aye.
3-2, motion passes. All right, so we'll go ahead, we'll move to supervisor comments, and I'll start with Bob. Doug, you have any comments?
Uh, no, no.
Ed, you have any comments?
No comments.
Carol?
Yes, at the, oh, my goodness. Okay, at the workshop that we're going to have at the next meeting, could we also include the corporate chart and the different positions that we have in the district? And also, are any, have any of them been vacant for more than two years? Just that information. Thank you.
Flavia, the only thing that I have as part of this is if the board had any topics that you'd like to see for the President's Council meeting? is if the board had any topics that you'd like to see for the President's Council meeting coming up in the next month. I didn't know if you guys had any that you wanted to bring up.
I think there needs to be a recap.
I think there needs to be a recap of what we just approved so that all of the neighborhood associations here in Gateway are quite knowledgeable of what the assessment methodology says and does.
That's all I have.
All right, with all that, I would like to thank you everyone for attending the meeting, and I'll go ahead and have a motion adjourned. Motion a second, all in favor? Aye.